September 16th, please stand for pugil allegiance.
Pugil allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Phil, off does he come his chair.
It's the lister.
Roll call please, yes.
Councilman Scourge is on military leave. Councilman Livingston?
Present.
Councilwoman France? President. Councilman Taylor?
Present.
Councilman Papstra?
Present.
Councilman Matzo?
Present.
President Scanlon?
Present.
Secure one absent. Scourge due military leave.
Start with RL 19-183. Mr. Gess. Oh, good. Jake Wossum, how are you?
Good. I'm stepping in for Matt today. Sorry. Just here to state that Vision Federal Credit Union reimbursed us for the bus rental for our New York Giants trip, for our football program, $2,255.
Very, very nice. That's a good deal. All right, questions or comments, Senators? Thank you, Jake, that was quick. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the RL 19-178.
I'm handling Steve.
Okay.
He's up at CDU's here right now.
Tito, step up, please. 109-182.
Hello, everyone.
How are you?
Good. So this is the zoning update. This is, I think, the third time presented. The last series of meetings was in, I think, February, January, February, and council was generally supportive. I think the thing that stuck out was the home occupations.
Yep.
After that meeting, we made changes and presented again. At a planning committee meeting, and the committee seemed satisfied, I can go over that section again or any other sections that you had questions on.
Are there any substantive changes from the last version that we would have seen?
The main change was to the parking requirement for dwelling units with four or more bedrooms, specifically the distance that that parking can be at. The distance is, it has to be onsite, basically. So we made some technical changes to make sure that that was enforceable and that it applied the way you want it to apply. So, so any building that contains any unit with four or more bedrooms will have to have parking onsite.
So that means you can't have a parking lot across three from your unit, or from your building, rather?
If you have more than four bedrooms in a unit, no. If you have less than that, what we would consider, you know, units that are appropriate for a family or roommates or a couple, you can have within 250 feet. So one to three bedroom units can have parking within 250 feet.
But these are designated rentals?
Um, not necessarily, no. It would apply to any dwelling unit with four or more bedrooms.
This is to make sure that we don't have like a large crowd on-street parking, which then...
The whole thing is, when you say four or more bedrooms, there's a lot of four-bedroom homes.
Right.
Family homes, so you can't be including those.
Well, those typically have parking onsite, you know, via driveway.
Right, you might have, you might have room for two cars in the, you know, a two-car garage.
Right.
But, I mean, how are you going to restrict a family with two or three kids? If they all have, if they all have a vehicle, you might have, I mean, in these residential neighborhoods, there's, there's, they all have driveways and garages.
Right.
They may not always be able to fit cars. I mean, I have a lot of you. You don't want to create one problem to try to fix another problem.
Sure. So what the code would do is that the required number of parking spaces, the minimum required spaces would have to be provided onsite. In the case of a one-family house with, let's say, five bedrooms, let's say the number of spaces required for that was three, they would have to have three spaces onsite. Obviously, they could have as many cars as they want, but to meet the requirement has to be met onsite. So they would have to provide those three spaces onsite.
How's that different, like with the example you gave, how is that different than what it is right now? There are five-bedroom houses.
Right now, anything with four or more bedrooms requires 2.33 spaces per unit. And we had, we found that that didn't make a lot of sense with some of the developments we were seeing because we had, for example, a fraternity house with, I think, 21 bedrooms. It was all one unit, and so that required two parking spaces.
So how many is it now?
We made the change so that it's per, it's based on the number of bedrooms, not the number of units. So I would have to calculate how many spaces would be allowed more than two.
Based on the number of bedrooms, not necessarily how many people are living there?
Right, because that, that's too difficult to enforce, you know, via zoning. So it's just, it's all, everything, we tried to make everything based on sort of structural, physical things in the property, that way it's easy to enforce. You can go and count the number of beds and then find that it's...
So in a lot of these neighborhoods where you have student housing and you have a seven-bed, they've taken a bedroom, a four-bedroom house, let's say, and they made a seven-bedroom house. I'm sure that's pretty common in the West Side area.
Good.
Yeah. So, and so that house typically was built for maybe having two, a two-story garage and maybe a couple of cars where they could fit it. So let's say it's a seven-bedroom house, and you're going to have, what, required three spaces?
Uh, I would have to calculate the number of spaces, but it's based on the number of beds. And then when you pass five bedrooms, I think, four or five bedrooms, the rate of spaces that you need goes up. So not only is it based on the number of bed, it's sort of tiered where one to two beds has a certain requirement, three or more has a certain requirement, five or more has a higher requirement.
I'm trying to see that, what that is, if, uh, does it...
Could you, could you up to page number two?
Yeah.
And then they can put parking in the back, but we can't have it in the front half of the house, so that way we obtain and keep...
Wait, we can't have parking in the front of the house?
Like in the front of the house. Well, if you go to West Side, like, yeah, not in the front lawn where you usually have a car.
Oh, in the front lawn?
I mean, it looked just terrible if you do that. So I mean, you did make sure to put that into the...
So the page is 68. That's the full of the parking requirements. We also simplified this so that the uses are more broad, so it's, if you want to open a business, it's a lot easier to figure out how many spaces you need.
Six, three, there is.
So it's one space per bedroom, not per bedroom?
How many of the five?
One space for the first bedroom and half a space per additional bedroom. So a five-bedroom unit would require, or in three.
And then, so the seven would require six spaces, or five or six spaces?
Five.
You said page 68?
It's been so, and this is updating the zoning, because a lot of the zoning that they had prior to this was like 30, 40 years ago, and many people, many of these homes were a single-family or a double-family home, and there's only one car per each family. Now we have a lot of homes that are going out to young adults or groups of people, and we have too much, too many cars to fit into the spaces that we have, and nothing's been done over the last 30, 40 years to get this fixed.
How do you, how do you enforce this?
When somebody is changing a use on a property, so they're either building or adding bedrooms to a unit, if they're changing the use somehow, then they have to meet the current code. So in that planning review process, they would have to show that they can provide the spaces.
So if there are houses right now that are, as Councilman Papstra described, they were built for four people, now they got seven, if that wasn't done formally and properly, then that property is not in compliance?
Right. If that was done legally, then the property owner can show that through a building permit, assessor's record, or some other way, then it's legal, non-conforming, meaning it doesn't conform to the current code, but it's legal for grandfathered in. If, if a property comes to the attention of the zoning officer for having too many bedrooms and the property owner cannot show that those bedrooms were added legally, then they can decide it by the zoning officer.
Yeah, how is that, so, because I get a lot of complaints about this in my district. If, if somebody contacted the zoning office and said, "I think there are seven people living in this house, and it's like a single-family home, and they think it's inappropriate." What's, how, is a call enough to trigger?
Yeah, they could call.
Someone to look at it?
They could call the zoning officer, and then he would open an investigation.
So it's a complaint driven?
Right.
What if they're like, support them if they're not one?
Right. A lot, a lot of times if somebody is selling a property to, they need a letter stating that the zoning is compliant. A lot of times issues come to the zoning officer's attention that way. But they'll ask for a zoning letter, and he'll go check it out and find issues there.
So Tito, because of the, some of these homes that are kind of sandwiched in, you know, they're 75-foot lots, maybe, at most, in some of these older neighborhoods, where they have done conversion on these homes, those are all going to be grandfathered in if they're legal?
If they were done legally, yes.
And so if someone wanted to do it now, there's really not going to be enough room to put five cars off-street parking in that, in that lot?
Right.
Can they go for a zoning variance, a hardship? I mean, what's the, what happens after that?
They could try to get a parking variance to reduce the amount of parking they have to provide, and then it would be up to the zoning board. I would think the zoning board would probably deny that, but, you know, it's going to be, it would... Unless there was some sort of real hardship, for example, if it was a very large family. I don't even know. There would have to be a real hardship for that variance to be granted.
Do you anticipate extra work as a result of this? I mean, I know that a lot of the complaints that have come in that describe this issue in the past, it seems like they went up against that functional family law, and it doesn't seem to really go anywhere. But this seems like a clear path for neighbors to get, to get some results. I'm wondering if that's going to create extra work for you guys?
Probably, and a budget increase to hire more people will be welcome.
Sad time to hear.
See, and you smile.
Well, duly noted.
One of, one of the discussions, because a lot of this came from discussions that I've been carrying on as the West Side resident for the last over three and a half years now. And I'm really grateful to see this in here. But one of the main reasons I worked on gathering all of this is because of the dysfunction that we have in, in parts of my district that are high-density and student housing, where we have a lot of multiple dwellings in these homes that were legally done before. We're discussing possibly doing a C6, which is the residential and commercial, which would still protect the residents, but it would bring in the commercial for the homes that we have now to be able to not break the law, because right now, even with this, they're still breaking the law by doing that because of the functional family. That is an issue that I wanted to have addressed more than anything, is to get rid of that and fix it and make it so that we have homes that aren't breaking the law, because there are students that are told not to call code enforcement because these homes are breaking the law. And then they're living in under, in substandard housing because of that. And I've lived in some of them myself, personally. And I noticed that it was taken off. I'm not very happy about that. The C6 zoning, I gave you the zoning too. And Ken Frank worked with me on it, and it was Ken Frank approved.
So we, we do have plans to try to rezone the city. That's something the comprehensive plan recommended.
There's, and it's not only in the West Side, but there's some parts in the East Side as well that we identified as well.
Right. And that, I think that would be the most appropriate time to address the changes in zoning districts.
When will that be?
That's a good question.
Yeah, I almost have three months off.
Okay.
I really wanted to get this done before I left. It's been my biggest thing in my district, you know, is to making sure, and this is a safety issue for me, because like I say, I have kids that are not calling code inspection, and I have low-income residents that don't call code inspection because the landlords are telling them not to. And they will be retaliating if they do.
Other questions?
Other than that?
If it was, if any of these buildings were converted legally, if they can provide any evidence at all, then they can continue.
And we had discussed that it's going to be a long haul trying to fix these homes, but there should, if they did it illegally, then they should be held accountable and fix it or change it back to what it was.
So please, Tom. And these that are converted legally, let's say, they go from a regular home of three or four bedrooms to a five, six, or seven-bedroom home, if you have, they're separate units, are they not? In most, or they, in some cases? So with our zoning, a four-unit, four-family or more, is pays a commercial rate?
No.
In their tax, the four-family or more pays a commercial rate?
That's a question for the assessor.
Well...
He's talking about apartment buildings.
Apartment build, yeah.
They're more than two units, right?
Well, up to three, up to three is residential, over three is commercial. And so I'm just, you know, we've always been looking for some way to charge student housing landlords, because they're, they're getting seven rents, or six, or however many, and they're paying a residential rate under tax.
That's something...
So I'm just wondering if there's something you can talk to the assessor about? If they're legally converted, is there any way that we can make that zoning? Because they're all paying rent, and it's, they're all paying separate, it's not one person paying rent for everybody. They're all paying separate rents. Can we find a way to charge a commercial rate for those homes? It's been very elusive through the years.
I think that the change in the zoning makes that possible, because what we did was that anything containing six or more bedrooms, now is no longer considered dwelling unit in the zoning order. It's considered congregate living. The rooms in it aren't considered bedrooms, they're considered sleeping units. And that's like, if you took from the International Building Code. So now, anything with six or more bedrooms is a different land use. And that doesn't necessarily affect what the assessor does, but I think that maybe opens the door for that, that if you have six or more bedrooms, you're a congregate living facility, and maybe the assessor can do that property differently.
Well, that's, that's, yeah, that's, that's encouraging.
Speaking of, the, sort of, these description changes or these definition changes, there seem to be a lot of them. In fact, I would say the majority of these changes here are changes, changes in the definitions of things. Are there substantial and very substantive changes in the definitions of different items throughout the code that you find are going to affect different situations in zoning in the city of things? And if so, what are those changes?
The main, the main thing that we changed in the definition section was that we, we sort of consolidated uses, the definitions, and therefore the land uses that were allowed or not allowed in certain districts that were very, very specific. So we made them broader so that it's easier for somebody who wants to open a business to figure out what land used applies to them. And so that's the main change, something that may have a big impact.
Parking distance.
Parking distance.
Parking distance is also. You mentioned larger projects need onsite, even smaller projects. For a short time, it was 800 feet, but in all residential districts, it was only 250 feet. So now all residential offsite parking would have to be within 250. That was, that was kind of a glitch a few years ago. The 800 feet was supposed to be for commercial, but then we got all this residential and commercial districts.
So one thing that's significant is that we defined a convenience store, and we changed, we split that use from retail food sales and from neighborhood convenience outlet. And the difference is that a convenience store is a certain size, operates 12 or more hours per day, and sells alcohol lottery tickets, tobacco products, and things like that. We wanted to sort of control where those things are to a certain extent without making it illegal or more difficult to just have a regular small grocery store, because that would negatively impact a lot of our neighborhoods if we sort of banned or made it harder to get approval for a grocery store. So we separated out the convenience store because we saw a lot of those popping up, and we saw a good amount of opposition from the public at the planning commission meetings where those were being proposed.
So convenience store, where is that now limited to? And are there existing convenience stores in the city that could no longer have been created or could no longer exist on this new change?
So any existing convenience store that, that was approved could remain?
Sure, but if they had now, just put in their application?
They would be allowed to operate just with, depending on the zoning district, a limit to the hours of operation, and then a limit on sales of tobacco, alcohol, lottery?
And then, I mean, here it says, you know, alcohol, for example, is listed under the definition of a convenience store, but there are convenience stores in the city that don't.
Right.
That don't sell alcohol.
Right. And so those would fall under retail food sales?
So that would not be...
Right.
Got you.
Not only is that allowed in more places, but that, in a lot of cases, will qualify for the administrative approval rather than having to go to the planning commission, if you're just selling food and drinks in convenience shops.
Other questions or comments?
Tito, the urban overlay district.
Yeah.
Can you maybe help by something, help me at least understand a little better how, how that urban overlay district works? And if there's a process whereby other urban overlay districts can be created?
The urban overlay district is an overlay, meaning it's like an additional set of regulations for a certain area on the near west side. The way that that section of the code is written, it's almost more of like a suggestion. There are some hard rules in there, but a lot of it is worded in a way that it's meant to just sort of guide the planning commission in the event that somebody's building a new building in that overlay district. One thing we had proposed was, that's pretty hard to enforce, and it's not really clear when it applies. So one of the things we proposed was to apply, to reword the regulations in the urban overlay district so that they're clear regulations, and that they're reasonable regulations too. And then apply that to a new zoning district, which we proposed as the C6.
That's what the C6 is.
Okay.
And that's for the West Side, and some of these.
So basically overlays are weird, being enforced, so we wanted to make it a proper district. But, like I said, we think that that makes more sense as part of a rezoning of the city.
Okay, okay. Yeah, sorry, I didn't follow that before. I didn't realize that you're an overlay and a C6 were the same thing.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm looking at congregate living, Tito.
Yeah.
So the, the second part of the definition is what you described around six or more bedrooms. The first part of the definition is a building or part thereof that contains two or more sleeping units where residents share a bathroom or kitchen or both. So does that, does that say that any, any two sleeping units, so rooms that are for sleeping in a congregate living facility, where they share a bathroom or kitchen with two or more?
I would look at it under the functional family more, like if they're not related and you're renting out bedrooms to people instead of like a family of three, where it's like two parents with like two kids.
Well, yeah, I'm asking in terms of the definition.
So sleeping units is actually something that comes from the building code, where the building code wants to have, have a building in a higher class than a typical residence, so in rooming houses and things like frat houses and things like bed and breakfasts and things like, things like that. And we defined it, so it's distinct from a bedroom, because the bedroom's also defined. So if you have, if, if the units in your building meet the definition of sleeping unit, then that applies. In other words, bedrooms are only in dwellings, and both definitions were worded in a way that we could separate dwelling units from, from congregate living facilities.
Okay, so six bedrooms are a dwelling unit, then it's a congregate living facility?
Right.
Or?
Or, exactly.
If there's two sleeping units adjoining to a bathroom or...
Right.
Okay.
One of the things I wanted to place into the frat houses and some of the other places where they have for like, like for halfway homes and whatnot, is if it's over a certain amount that they have to have on-site staff, would that make any?
We considered that, but operational things are hard to enforce through zoning. You know, we wanted to sort of make sure that everything was enforceable by the zoning officer going there and seeing something physical, number of bedrooms, you know, locks on doors, things like that.
If you know that you have a certain number of bedrooms and you know that you're going to have a certain number of people in it, then all that busy request is that one of the rooms is going to be on-site staff.
Okay.
And the reason for that is because I've had deaths in my district from students that have been killed because there was no supervision. I want to make sure that does not happen again. We should have some kind of responsibility to those kids and their parents when they come to our city.
So you would want congregate living facilities to...
Well, Juliette and I were working on it, we said it's like over 10. Just trying to find the number, anything, I think it was like eight, nine, or 10. We didn't really get a number yet, but just to make sure that as a city, we are ensuring the safety of the people.
What do you, that there has to be like an onsite manager?
Yeah. And I'm actually looking to do this myself in one of my nonprofits, so I'd actually have to shoot myself in the foot because I might have to chase staff to do it. So it's not like I'm trying to get away with it.
Sure. So, so you're proposing for congregate living facilities that, that those facilities require?
If they have over like 10 units.
So, yeah.
So if we have places like frat houses or anything that has over 20 units, just to have onsite staff, a lot of the places usually do have onsite staff.
Okay. So six or more bedrooms is congregate living, so is that, because we actually kept, so another change that we made is you can't have more than 10 bedrooms or sleeping units in any dwelling unit, period, in the city anymore?
What about the frat houses?
You can't, you can't do that?
That little payback, that was not true. Okay, thanks.
I can't, 10, 10, 10 bedrooms or less, is what you're saying, you know, right now?
Right.
In the city?
Right. Right now, there's no room.
So, okay, so...
And we have places in the West Side that have like 20-something beds that look to that where there's no supervision. to that where there's no supervision because of all. And there's a lot of issues with parties as well. And residents have to live next to those students who are having the parties. You know, it's a quality of life issue. Safety for the children here and quality of life for the residents. You better, you know, respect everybody that's living here.
So knowing that there's a ten-room limit, would you still want that onsite manager or is that sort of satisfied?
Let me look into the number of homes because I think some of the homes that we have where the kids fell were less than when we had it. I mean, I drive by in the west side and I see kids barbecuing on me. It's pretty crazy.
What, do you know, do you have buildings that have ten bedroom units in the city?
We could come up with an estimate.
And, you know, if this is passed, if the property owner would want to make any sort of change to their facility, to their building, they would need to follow this new code and in result there, ten bedroom unit would no longer be...
If they...
Or eleven bed.
Right. If they, if they created that, those bedrooms illegally and they wanted to make a change that required plan review or they wanted a zone letter from the zoning officer, they would now have to reduce the number of bedrooms or sleeping units.
And it's illegally, not legally. If they went through already and it was already zoned for that, then that's fine. But if they, if they did it illegally, like I say, then they should be held accountable.
Oh, sure, yeah.
If it was legal, let's say you had twelve bedrooms legally, you wouldn't be able to add any. But you would make certain changes and keep your twelve bedrooms in the city.
Well, I see, and then maybe if we're having to keep the twelve bedrooms, we want to see, you know, onsite staff.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, Tito.
We gotta move this along.
Okay, sorry.
With something like Airbnb, how have you, I guess, updated code to anticipate that kind of use?
So Airbnb would just be considered overnight lodging. We broadened the use. We made a broad use called overnight lodging. That's for hotels, motels, bed and breakfast.
Yeah.
And Airbnb would fall under that. And if overnight lodging is not permitted in the district where you're trying to do an Airbnb, then you can't do an Airbnb.
And I noticed that the definition of a bed and breakfast said twenty-one, I think it was like ten, twenty-one accumulated consecutive days for guest occupancy in general. And then the other one, what was it, the overnight stay referred to like twenty-one days per guest, I think? So there's a distinction there, I guess, that has such a difference where you, some people, in some, in some uses, you can have a facility that where people can stay overnight just as long as they don't stay past a certain duration each. And then in other districts, they can't have the place continuously occupied beyond twenty-one days or breakfast and if that's not allowed. I'm just trying to understand.
If it's occupied from anything under twenty-one days is overnight lodging. Once you pass twenty-one days, it's considered dwelling even or congregate living, depending on how many bedrooms you have. And you would have to meet, you know, whatever criteria applied to that to a dwelling.
All right, thank you, Tito. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tito.
What was the storm effect?
Well, the next procedural step is that you're meeting on Wednesday night, you would schedule a public hearing for your attorney.
Ray Standis, you're up.
Tell us about one nine eight four and one nine eight five. Nine two eight, one eight four and one eight five.
One eight four is a resolution to authorize mayor into an agreement with Barton with Judas for engineering services associated with starting back up the city transfer station. It will involve some permitting issues with DEC. We have to do permit modification. And we also have to do some minor alterations to the facility itself.
Forgive me, Ray. So by starting back up, what do you exactly mean? So where were we and where are we and where are we going?
Well, the city has a permit to operate a transfer station, but that permit is for Packer-style transfer station where you have a ram that pushes the garbage into the back with tractor trailer. That hasn't been used in a number of years. And the city has not been using this transfer station. It's been taking the Packer trucks completely up to the landfill and coming back, which is wear and tear on the trucks. So we want to try and permit the transfer station so that we only send up a couple trucks and they're not garbage trucks. They're not collectors. They're roll-offs with the garbage transferred into them.
So have we done any sort of, this makes sense to me, but have we done any sort of analysis of what makes the most financial sense here? Because I remember, you know, two years ago, this conversation being the exact opposite with the former DPW commissioner and this whole argument that it makes the most sense just to, you know, to drive up there and just invest in it.
I believe, I believe that that argument was that it was cheaper to do that than it was to purchase a new ram and continue to do it by packing the back of tractor trailers. Now, I wasn't here, so I can't speak directly to that, but I believe that's what the argument would have been. The intent now is to buy forty cubic yard roll-offs, which are not that expensive, and an articulated small loader to transfer the garbage from the tipping floor into the roll-off. And then the roll-off truck goes up to the landfill and the Packers just keep picking. So the wear and tear on a Packer truck is considerably less. Truck can probably speak to the cost associated with that.
So we don't actually know which one is the better option?
Continuing to run garbage trucks up there is, would, in all likelihood, not be cheaper than using roll-offs. Because you're sending a tractor trailer pulling a trailer with a roll-off on it up there and back. A tractor trailer is made to run on the road. Garbage trucks are not made to run up that hill.
Sure.
And back down. It's just extra.
You need three guys on a truck.
And three guys on a truck.
That makes sense to me. Do we, but the city doesn't have tractor trailers?
We have two tractors.
Oh, do we?
So we just have to purchase a small, a couple of small roll-off trailers and the roll-off units.
Ray, so explain this to me. So when the garbage gets dumped up there by the Packers in the transfer station, so it still gets compacted, right?
No.
It's not compacted?
No. What the procedure will be is one of the garbage trucks will come in, the collector truck will back up, dump the contents onto the tipping floor. A loader will scoop up that compacted garbage, which will still be somewhat compacted and load it into a forty cubic yard roll-off. And they'll put a tarp over the roll-off when it's full and haul it to the landfill.
The only compaction happens at the Packer then, right?
Yeah.
Whatever this is, okay.
Yep.
So I understand. Thank you.
Yes, sir. There's no equipment involved other than an articulated loader. That's it.
Other questions or comments on this?
So what's the estimated cost, you know, when you're all done with this project?
I think we estimated around two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes.
That's what we discussed.
Correct.
Yes. To purchase a new equipment, right?
Yeah. It's almost all new equipment, but before we can even do that, we'd have to do the permit modification, which is what most of this is for.
Okay.
Tom?
Yes.
Concentrate. The primary change from the discussion back then is when we looked at this several years ago, the cost to do what Ray is talking about ranged from five hundred thousand to a million dollars. So the cost to do what we're doing now is significantly lower. So back when that decision was made several years ago, in the backdrop of half a million dollars to a million dollar project, at that time, it was cheaper to go back and forth up to the landfill. Now that we have the opportunity to do this at a much lower cost, forces reevaluation of the topic. And at this amount of money, it makes more sense in this direction instead of going back and forth with the wear and tear and everything else.
So why did the cost drop so drastically?
I mean, I don't exactly know what...
I believe, I believe it had to do with the...
It's a different problem.
Right. The procedure that I'm discussing now is different than the procedure they were talking about before. They were talking about using a ram to load the garbage into the back of, and compact it into the back of tractor trailer. And then the tractor trailer would go to the trailer. Which is what was done years ago when the transfer station was in operation.
Why, so wait, why is that so much more expensive? Why is...
Because you've got a piece of equipment that you have to maintain to do that.
And what happened to that piece of equipment?
I have no idea.
The old transfer station, is that the old DPW drive? Yeah, it's been gone for years. I think that ram was pretty much shot anyway.
It was pretty well shot. That's why they closed it down at the beginning.
We're talking about the one upgrading one, right?
Yes.
That's the ordinary piece of equipment, the ram is?
No, what, the plan is now, it was the ram that would be the five hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars or?
It was more than just one piece of equipment. There was, it was a cost for the entire resurrection of that transfer station.
Plus you're gonna buy the tractor trailers.
Correct.
That's probably where the million dollars comes from, between the tractor trailers and the ram and everything else.
Well, we still gotta buy the trailers.
You said two hundred and fifty thousand for the trailers.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? We're all gonna, okay, Ray, I mean, which one, please?
And the next one is authorize mayor to enter into a supplemental agreement with the New York State DOT to release, what this does, releases the construction and construction inspection funds for Beldon Street and Convent Avenue bridges over Pierce Street. If they're ready to go to bid, I believe the bids will be going out shortly.
Questions or comments on this?
Were they supposed to start this last year? When was this supposed to start last year? The two bridges?
They were, it was supposed to, but it was put off by BMTS and the DOT funding. They pushed it out a year and then it took longer for the design and anticipation.
Other questions or comments?
Tom, will we make a comment there?
Sure.
I mean, we may have to do a bond modification to this, okay? Depending on when the bids come back. So the estimates being now a little bit higher than what we originally anticipated like three years ago. But until we get the bids back, we don't know.
I mean, the bids may come in and be acceptable.
Just wanted to make you aware.
And we are also, because of bidding them, has one project, the two projects, the DOT let us put them together, the bid has one project so we can get a better price on all the steel. Rather than buy steel for one bridge and then put it out to bid and buy steel for another one. Put it out to bid as one project, you get the steel cheaper. So we should put a lower price than what was originally anticipated when the bridges were estimated for construction. So we're hoping to get some take. Hold on.
Thank you, Ray. Chuck, onto you, please.
One minute, please, once.
Okay, this is a bond that we did back in two thousand and Ray called to do the, to pay it himself to design the rehab of the salt barn. That project's all done. This money was not spent, just getting rid of it so it doesn't get spent.
Questions or comments? Thanks, Chuck. This is Jared and Ken Frank.
I think Ken was shooting. Ken, I don't know.
He's got Ray now.
Is he back, Chris?
No, he's got Ray.
I need you to go listen.
Sure. These are extension agreements for school resource officers for both the Binghamton High School and middle schools as well as for Binghamton University, saying firms, the agreement extension for this current school year.
Is everybody talk of extending the SRLs into the grade schools from the school district?
I don't agree with anything.
I wish they would do that, in my opinion. Questions or comments on this?
Well, as city councilman, I was trying to work to have volunteers and like officers during like the paid time, during off, their off time to go in and volunteer at the schools. That's something that I was discussing with the schools and it kind of fizzled out for the elementary schools, just so the kids are...
It's one of, it's one around the country. Things like that going on around the country. It's a good deal.
Other questions or comments?
On the one eight zero.
That's...
Those were kind of together.
Yeah, those were.
Kind of.
Questions or comments on one eight zero? We're on to Ken Frank now. One eight four, one eight three, I think.
This is what I sent around this afternoon. We heard back from the IDA today. They provided us with a copy of the proposed pilot agreement for county departments. The mayor's office has previously explained the level of investment being put there. Double check with Scott, the attachment to schedule is the one that he had proposed. But I talked to the IDA a week ago, but they just got back to me with the agreement this afternoon.
Yeah, just to kind of reiterate a little background on this, as Ken just indicated, we just got this, you know, before the end of the day. That's why as soon as we got it, we forwarded on to, to members of council. But this was a project that was announced several months ago, JE Properties, which is a Boston-based firm advancing a project for thirty-eight million dollars for Town and Country on the north side of the city. And I think many of you know that Town and Country has been a source of problems for the city over the course of the last several years, decade and beyond. At one point, I know several years ago, we even had sent out a public statement with regards to how many police calls there had been, I think, over a five-year period that the council members had. There was a homicide that was there around the, on the property and murder suspect found one of the units about several years ago as well. So, you know, there is, there have been ups and downs with that property depending on who has owned it. And so there really hasn't been any sort of what I would call major or significant investment in that property since it was built. You know that the location is owned to hundreds of the poorest individuals and families in our community. I know that, you know, generally speaking, pilots are not always a popular concept or item to talk about. But I just think that what this does for the city is, and the residents are, are several things. First, you have a very, a developer with a very solid track record of development. This is the same developer that did the... This is the same developer that did the civilly mixed-use project in Rochester at two hundred million dollars, which at that time was the largest project of rehabilitation, a project in downtown Rochester's history. I'm not sure where else we're going to see, you know, close to thirty million dollars' worth of investment in that property. So it's not just inside with rehabilitation of the units. There's a lot of exterior work too with regards to security features, lighting, fencing, just cleaning up the, the basic parcel, um, with regards to landscaping, placemaking, making it safer. Obviously, with, uh, enhanced management comes a, what I would say is a better screening process. No one is going to be displaced. It's not about, uh, evicting several hundred people that are there and bringing in, uh, new individuals. That's not, that's not what it is at all. So I, I just think that as council has, um, deliberates with regards to what types of projects, you know, leased up and granted pilots over the course of this tenure, we want to make sure that we're, we're very balanced with regards to, uh, I know we've provided pilots incentives for homeless projects. We provided pilots incentives for high-end luxury. We provided pilots incentives for student housing. We provided pilots incentives for affordable housing. We just, this is, uh, an incentive that's really necessary to make this project a reality. And I would just say in the absence of that, um, the absence of change left with the status quo, right? So, um, there's a long documented kind of record of, uh, the drawn services for, you know, police, fire, et cetera. So I think this is really just an opportunity for the city. This developer was specifically attracted to Binghamton based on other, uh, public and private projects that are going on in downtown and on the north side. And so I know at the time where, uh, several years ago, when the current owner and the administration kind of, kind of were going head-to-head with regards to the way this property was, was being managed, um, the, the sale of this property and bringing in a different management group was really one of a desired goal for the city. And so, um, you know, in order to get this toward, this sort of investment, we're talking about tens of millions of dollars. I think, you know, the, the question is, you know, could this project move forward if there wasn't a pilot, right? Or a, I guess, it's not actually a pilot, it's, there's a different word for, it's in the same category. But I think for Schenango Place, uh, there was, there was a different, uh, possible for a different, uh, the name was, there was a different, a different program. What we don't want to have happen is just have this seller sell to another person who's gonna maintain the status quo, not put any money into it, um, try to bleed the property, and continue to be a magnet for problems, which is not good for north side residents and not good for the municipal services in the city. So, you know, if there really is a trade-off, and in my opinion, I mean, where else, what other project in the city have we seen where you've had thirty million dollars into, you know, low-income or affordable housing, I don't think you've seen anything like that, not only in the city, but from across the region. So, uh, we think it's, we think it's positive. We're very pleased with, uh, the developer and his track record. It has a long, solid track record. And, uh, I think this is a, a good win-win for the city.
Good. You're all, raise your hand.
Yeah.
Chris, go ahead, Chris.
I'm looking, I'm having a hard time with thirty years. That's my problem. I really am. If I had time, I'll get it anyway, but that's not the point when it's done.
So don't count yourself out.
Do we?
Oh, no, I'm done. At the end of this pilot, is there, is there an agreement not to extend the pilot from there on in? Or what's, how's that working?
Um, the, uh, I, I don't believe it addresses, you know, what, what happens, you know, after thirty years. You know, one of the things I, I think that I'm, I'm going to attempt to do, I don't know if, if I'll be able to do this, but, um, I know I, we've talked with other projects about, uh, because the, the financial incentives are coming from HCR, uh, New York State Home and Community Renewal. I would like to ask their, the individual we deal with at the state level, Leonard Skrill has, has agreed to come down to talk about this project. And, and the reason I bring that up is because, uh, HCR has been a great partner for the city and has supported a lot of our applications. This is the one project where instead of me calling Lenny, pushing it, advocating, asking what the status is, he's the one calling me, asking me, where, where does this project stand? Has your council approved it? Has the IDA approved it? This, from the state's perspective, is, you know, a, a major project that they want to, you know, they want to see advanced. And, uh, he was, he's, he's willing to come down and advocate for it. And I told him I thought that that was a good idea, just based on.
So say they go on the property at ten doors and they sell. Pilot stop, does it carry out?
Pilot's only to the use.
It's transferred.
It's transferred, hold on.
Yes.
But to the use though. So if your thought is that, that another developer could come in and, you know, throw everybody out and do, you know, a high-end project or, you know, it, it, it's tied to, uh, it's tied to this use.
Is, is all the investment stacked on the front end? Like all the investment in the property? Or is there some that's like spaced out over thirty years?
No, that's, that's a good question. And it's actually, it is stacked on the front end because, uh, well, I mean, it, it's phased in the front end, I'll say, because they have to, they can't obviously renovate every unit at the same time. So they have to, you know, stage it in the sense of, you know, we'll work on this building first and this building first. And, uh, they do have some units that are, that are vacant, which they're able to kind of, what they've said is, um, and they're, they're able to work around, um, people for most of, most of, of the work, right? So, um, most of all, I, I think is what they said. But, uh, I guess I would say within the first year or two was the way that it was kind of conveyed to us is that they're hoping, he's hoping to break ground, um, this fall. This is one of the last kind of pieces of it. But I'll preface that by saying fall could be winter, fall could be early, you know, spring. But he wants to, to break ground, you know, immediately. But, uh, and everything would be done on the front end because, uh, they have certain timelines that they have to meet with regards to their state incentives. So it's not just that they went to a bank and the bank is financing the whole thing. Like many of our, uh, projects, um, that are in the affordable housing, it, it's either through loans, grants, or tax credits, or home and community renewal. So there, there's a bunch of benchmarks and milestones on the state's end that they, that they have to meet.
On that note, what, what are the guidelines and or restrictions that, that have been outlined by us or by the state to ensure that this stays as affordable housing, that this investment doesn't result in rents increasing dramatically? Uh, and what sort of guarantees exist in writing about that?
I mean, yeah, I don't know if you want to take that. But my, my understanding is that it's, it's spelled out pretty clearly on the state side.
In the grant.
With, yeah, with all their grant funding and, and tax incentives. And that's, um, I mean, if you want, because this is no different than Bruce Levine's project, four thirty-five West State Street.
Is it the same tax incentives and programs?
It's, um, it's through a, a home and community renewal. I don't think it's the exact same, but it's, it's, all of the programs are within HCR. And I think they actually technically got different pots of money, but still overseen through, uh, HCR. But the state's protections supersede anything that we would do. Theirs aren't much, right? I mean, Ken, basically, they've already done what you're asking.
They have?
Well, it, it's, it's built in into their language and their contracts and the agreements that have to.
Is that based on, uh, on this, you know, one-time renovation? Is that for a set period of time until these tax credits expire? When does, when do they expire? You know, is, is this a five-year tax credit and five years they can jack up the rents on a newly renovated property? You know, what, what does that look like?
Well, the, uh, they are obviously permitted to, to increase their, their rents by a formula that's spelled out within their contract. Because it's obviously not frozen at, you know, whatever it is for thirty years. But whether it's spelled out as, as, as something connected to CPI or, I, I don't know exactly what the percentage rent increase is. I mean, that I don't know. But I know that they're corrected, that these incentives are, are connected to the length of, of the projects. So that, you know, the state's not gonna put all this, the state's not gonna allow them tax credits, grants, or loans in the amount of thirty million dollars and allowing to, you know, flip it.